Good evening, Commission. I would like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Today's date is September 12, 2022, and the time is 6:06. I would like to call upon Commissioner Hernandez to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
Thank you, Commissioner. Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call vote? I mean, a roll call, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Ayala? Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Rounds?
Here.
Vice Chair Carvahal?
Here.
Chair Jimenez?
Here.
We have a client.
Thank you. Item four, Expartee Communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or expartee communications about public hearings. Are there any expartee communications to report?
Commissioner Carvahal, none.
Commissioner Hernandez, none.
And myself, Commissioner Jimenez, none. Public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us via Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, except for comments or public comment. The Planning Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through Zoom application. Please note that you'll have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public present in the audience or otherwise on Zoom that wish to speak today? Okay. How are you doing, Jeff?
Yes, hi, everyone. Jeff Hamilton with Goodman here. I actually wasn't intending on speaking tonight, but the video function is not working on the Zoom. And I was just curious if that's something that you guys may be able to fix. If not, no big deal. I can just listen.
There we go.
That was it. It's all that I had.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Ramirez.
Hi, my name is John Ramirez, and I actually am the Community Development Director at the City of Norwalk. So, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I was actually intending to talk about the item that is on, I think it's on Lakeland, but I was a little I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss my window to talk. If that's going to be a public hearing, I could talk on that at that time. Will that be a public hearing?
Yes, it will.
And then I'll be able to comment at that time on that specific project, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll hang tight. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Secretary?
Jimenez, no one else.
Thank you. Item six, Approval of Minutes. Approval of the Minutes of August 8, 2022, Planning Commission Meeting. Could I get a motion and a second for approval of minutes, please?
Commissioner Carvahal.
I'd like to make a correction. I discovered it in my office this morning. I indicated the wrong city attorney. I still have Barr instead of Christie. So I did make that correction myself. So if you can approve the minutes as corrected, I'd appreciate that, Commissioners. Thank you.
Move as corrected, Commissioner Carvahal.
Actually, Kathy, not Christie.
No, I'm sorry. For last month's meeting.
Oh, for the attending, okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? We have a new Commissioner, so does he have to? Yeah. Okay. So ordered. Item number seven, Public Hearing. Sequo adoption of mitigated negative declaration. Development Plan Approval, DPA Case Number 997. A request for approval to allow the construction of a new 185,450 square foot concrete tilt-up industrial building and related improvements on property located at 12300 Lakeland Road in the M2 BP Heavy Manufacturing Buffer Parking Zone. I would like to call upon Assistant Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number seven.
Hello? Hello, Commissioner. I'm gonna start my presentation for Development Plan Approval Case Number 997. Subject property is located at 12300 Lakeland Row. Land use destination is industrial. Zoning is currently M2 with a BP overlay, so it's heavy manufacturing with a buffer parking. The applicant for the project is EPD Solution, and the owner of the property is Duke Realty Lakeland Row LP. Little background, the subject property is approximately 8.42 acre, currently occupied by Cast Iron Steel Company, which is a metal casting company. Industrial use are generally surrounding the property. However, single-family residential use are located along the west side of Norwalk Boulevard and is within the City of Norwalk jurisdiction. The subject property is located within the methane zone. There are three former oil well located on or immediately adjacent to the property. Currently is developed with a 49,000 square foot cover concrete work area, a office, a 4,000 square foot office area, and two single-story building around 7,000 square feet for each. The request is to allow for the construction of a new 185,450 square foot concrete two-up industrial building to be located on the subject property. Here's the proposed site plan. The subject building will set back a minimum of 350 feet from Norwalk Boulevard and 42 foot and 10 inch from Lakeland and Getty Drive. The proposed project will have 24 dock door along the west elevation, and it will have a 1,200 square foot trash enclosure area with a track compactor located along the westerly property line. Parking and landscaping for the subject property will be distributed throughout the whole entire site. There will be three driveway being proposed for the subject development. The first one will be located along Norwalk Boulevard, which is a 26-foot wide driveway. And then the second one will be 30 foot, 35 foot wide driveway along Lakeland Row. The last one will be a 30 foot, 35 foot driveway along Getty Drive. Based on the proposed development, 232 parking stalls is required and six truck trailer parking is required by code. The project will provide 234 parking stall and six truck trailer parking, which meet and exceed the required parking area, parking requirement. The landscaping requirement will be 24,246 square foot. The applicant is providing a total of 53,952 square foot of landscaping, which exceed the required landscape. Here's a conceptual landscaping plan. Tree and landscaping will be provided on the perimeter of the property and along the parking area. Here's the proposed floor plan. One office area will be proposed along the northwest corner of the building. The first floor will be 4,000 square foot. This mezzanine will be another 4,000 square foot, and the rest will be a warehouse area. The proposed development is only going to be for a single tenant, and it's only parked for a single tenant, and they will not be permitted to subdivide or have multi-tenant in this property. Here's the elevation of the proposed building. Here's the first submittal that was submitted to the city, and then the final submittal that was being proposed currently. Additional glazing and pop-out was provided as the project moved forward, and other material was being provided so it can to provide more element, architectural element for the elevation. Sequo review. A IS MND was prepared and circulated for the required 20-day public review period from August 8, 2022 through August 29, 2022. It was posted on LA County Recorder Office and the State Clearinghouse. Staff received three comment letter. One was from LA County Fire Department, another one from City of Norwalk, and the last one from South Co. Air Quality Management District. Our environmental consultant, EPD Solution, had provided a response to these comment as attachment to the final draft MND and to the staff report, attachment six. I'm gonna briefly I'm gonna briefly go over some of the comment that was the staff received. The first one is from LA County Fire. The comment is relate to submittal of review. According to LA County Fire, any EIR need to be submitted through Epic LA for review, and they no longer accepting any MND, EIR by mail. The response to the comment is that the proposed project does not doesn't have a EIR, so it was not required to submit through Epic LA for review. The second comment we got, comment letter we got was from City of Norwalk. It's related to the proposed truck route. The common request that the truck traffic generated by the proposed project should stay within the City of Santa Fe Springs and not utilize any street within City of Norwalk. So here is the proposed truck route, which goes through the 5 freeway exit Imperial and go through Bloomfield and then go back to Lakeland. As you can see, the truck route will go through City of Norwalk, which is in the area of Purple, and then go through an area where it was split from Norwalk and City of Santa Fe Springs along Bloomfield. My response is that the subject development would generate less traffic than the current, so there isn't any impact to the existing truck route. In addition, the city the city can dictate how a truck travel throughout Southern California, and it's impossible for us to regulate that issue. As long as Imperial is a dedicated truck route, there's nothing the city can do to mandate them to go through City of Santa Fe Springs and not City of Norwalk. So the last comment letter we received is from South Co. Air Quality Management District. These comment are mostly relate to regulation and and technical report. If you have any question regarding those comment, we do have the environmental consultant here to answer them, but they are very technical. I will not be able to go in depth with those information. However, our environmental consultant have provided a response to comment as attachment and to the draft MND. Public hearing notice was mailed out on August 31st, were posted on City Hall, Town Center Hall, Library, and also published on Video Daily News. So far, we have not received any comment regarding the project, only regarding the sequoia report. So consideration, the project meet the criteria set for in Section 155.739 of the zoning ordinance for granting of a development plan approval. No modification permit or zone variant was required. The second consideration is the project involved the construction of a new and attractive industrial building on a site that is currently occupied as a metal fabrication and outdoor storage. And the design of the new building provide high-quality architectural design, as demonstrated by glazing, pop-out, and various variation in material and color. Staff recommend approving and adopting the proposed environmental document, initial study mitigation, mitigated negative decoration, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approved DPA 997, subject to the condition as stay within the attached solution and adopt Resolution Number 214-2022, which incorporate the Planning Commission finding and action regarding this matter. And that conclude my presentation. We do have the applicant and the environmental consultant and our traffic engineer to answer any question relating to project.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item?
I just, yeah, I guess it'd be a question. So Norwalk understands that there's no way we can enforce that travel route with the trucks, right?
Email and request, no, question regarding the truck route, and we did told them that there's no way we can dictate it. We can recommend a truck route, but as long as Imperial is doesn't have any weight limit, there's no way for us to mandate that.
But what was the response back from that?
I haven't heard any respond yet after the reply from our city engineer. I'm sure they might have some comment regarding that later.
Any other questions? Mr. Rounds?
I have one question. Do they have an estimate on how many trucks a day will be leaving that site and traveling on the streets?
I can have the environmental consultant to provide that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. So, that being said, I would like to open the public hearing at 6:25. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function. Please state your name and city of residence for the record and address the Planning Commission, please.
As on? Thank you, Commissioners. My name is DJ Ariano, resident of Riverside, California, and I am the owner, representative of Duke Realty. We're also the applicant of the property of the proposed project. I wanted to first thank our planner, Jimmy Wong, Wayne Moreau, and all of the city staff for working with us and getting this project in front of you tonight. Duke Realty, we are long-term holders of Class A Logistics Real Estate nationwide. We develop, own, manage all of our properties in-house, and take great pride in having high-quality projects that bring high-quality tenants and jobs. All of our new constructions, such as this one, will be LEED certified or better with almost all attaining LEED Silver. These certifications typically include energy-efficient design fixtures, smart building management systems to ensure that the project continues to be environmentally friendly through the life of our building. We are also proud of our partnerships with local labor unions. Duke has agreements with our project that our project will be built by local labor, including members of Labor International, Launa, and the local carpenters union, that will ensure a quality-built building. Overall, our goal is to be positive contributor to the community and good neighbor. We've worked hard with the staff here at the city over the past year until we put together a great project that is both functional for our future user, minimizes or reduces environmental impacts, will contribute to the community, and is aesthetically pleasing. We have read and accept the conditions of approval as written. In addition, myself, we have our Sequo consultant here to answer any specific questions you may have about the project. Thank you again, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, please state your name and city of residence, and please note there's a three-minute limit for each speaker.
Hi, good evening. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is John Ramirez, and I'm representing the City of Norwalk at 12700 Norwalk Boulevard. And thank you for allowing me to share a little bit about this project from our city's perspective. So staff did not indicate to us anything about the truck route on Imperial or Bloomfield. The traffic engineer specifically cited Lakeland that runs in between a residential neighborhood as inappropriate for the truck route, and we were never recommending that the trucks go down Lakeland towards Pioneer. We were recommending that the trucks go north on Norwalk Boulevard to make a left on Florence and go to the 5 freeway, either north or south from that option, and so staff never shared with us anything about the inability to enforce. I think that you know, as long as Florence is a truck route, there's no problem with compelling that in terms of adding a condition to make that happen. I'd be curious about the number of truck trips as well. I mean, Imperial is highly impacted, especially since that segment of the 5 freeway widening was done before the Florence Avenue right by Florence and Oran Day before that area was finished. So there's a tendency for more traffic to move in that direction. It'll take some time to balance out. But we've never had a follow-up from the city engineer about the Bloomfield Imperial truck route. So we understand that there is some limitations when there is a truck route. But we also know that the City of Santa Fe Springs knows and understands that we've been having challenges with the DAMCO facility that Goodman owns at Excelsior and Bloomfield/Shoemaker, and we've been working with the city to try to find a way to help the offset the impact to our residents. So, you know, we're looking, we're looking to continue that partnership with the City of Santa Fe Springs to to help the residents of Norwalk as well, since we've been good neighbors for a very long time. So that's all I'd like to share, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Johnny.
Mr. Ramirez, do you have a suggestion of how we can enforce that?
Well, it could be a, it could be a mitigation measure, or it can be a condition of approval, and the applicant, if they're, you know, if they're willing to lean forward and lean towards, you know, the best way to approach the project, they could agree to that condition, and then it would be enforceable as a condition. You know, as long as Florence is a truck route, there shouldn't be any problem with that. Obviously, there might be times where they have to use a different route because of construction or because of like an accident or something like that. And that's true, and that effect, you know, the city won't be able to limit the use of other alternative truck routes. But it doesn't seem unreasonable to add a condition or mitigation measure to that effect.
So you understand that we can try to implement that, but at times, we can't always enforce that if by some means, they choose to go that route, which they shouldn't, but you understand that, right?
Correct, absolutely. Yes, for sure. But I appreciate having the opportunity to share, so I do appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, sir.
For Mr. DJ Ariano, do you have a list of tenants that will occupy the facility or names of businesses that will occupy?
Good question.
We're currently building this as a spec development, but a lot of our Home Depot and Wayfair or So right now, it is being built on spec.
Right.
Just proceed otherwise. We should, if there's any question, we should really have the consultant come up and answer those question.
Okay. Was there any other questions for the consultant?
Just the one that I already asked.
Oh, yes.
The number of trips would be 93 trips on a daily which is equal to what is currently there right now. With EPD Solutions.
Okay, Planning Secretary, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Were there any comments submitted via email for item number seven? Okay, great. I would like to close the public hearing at 6:33. And is there a motion and a second for item number seven?
Commissioner Carvahal move.
Commissioner Hernandez is the second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Carvahal, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ayala? Yes or no? Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds? Vice Chair Carvahal?
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Five zero was the vote.
So ordered.
A Commissioner approving the project as it is and not adding any condition. Is that correct?
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Kathy Forlick, please.
Yes, the Planning Commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the Commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 14-day period.
Thank you. Item number eight, Consent Item. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion or roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the Planning Commission. Item A, Conditional Use Permit, CUP Case Number 787-3. A request for a time extension of conditional use permit Case Number 787 to allow the establishment, operation, and maintenance of a mini warehouse facility on subject property located at 11212 Norwalk Boulevard in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone. For Consent Item Number 8A, is there a motion and a second for the approval of this item?
Commissioner Hernandez is the second.
Motion by Commissioner Rounds, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Most definitely, Chair Jimenez. Commissioner Ayala? Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds? Vice Chair Carvahal?
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
So ordered. Item number nine, Announcements. Are there any Commissioners that have any announcement that they would like to share? Item number nine announcements, are there any commissioners that have any announcement that they would like to share?
Commissioner Hernandez known at this time.
I'd like to uh congratulate and welcome Commissioner Ayala to our permission. Um and also coming up on September twenty-fourth is the uh annual Relay for Life for Santa Fe Springs. And um if you're, hopefully you're planning on going, it's a great uh for a great cause and a great event. And uh like it was last year, it's a one-day event, it starts at noon and concludes at ten PM with a luminary. Bagpipes and a little bit of fireworks, so uh just come out. You know, uh if you can come out for an hour, two hours, just come or walk around and there'll be booth set up. And all the proceeds goes to the American Cancer Society, so hopefully you can, we'll see all of you there.
Uh Chair, I I do have a couldn't, welcome. And and congratulations on her uh they go advisor over there and her new addition.
Um again, welcome, I have a couple of questions or if someone could get back to me, I'd like an update on Sonic. And I'd like an update on SMP, please.
Sonic is still, Sonic is still scheduled to to be uh braided. By December. They recently submitted their revised plans for plan check. This week, that shows the building moved. All of that was already approved, the original building, but. Because they did not have that agreement, the plans need to be revised. But it's just not the revision of. The plan itself, it still needs to go through building plan check and then. Electrical and ironically enough. Some of the equipment that they ordered when it was originally approved. Is no longer available, so they need to go and redo reordered equipment. And one last thing is they changed the plan, I don't know if many of you are familiar with. I think it's for Dale thirty-nine and is it garden grow? Stanton, where they have an outside indoor feature where the windows. Open up so that you have that feel of being indoor, although they changed the plans to reflect that. So overall, it'll be a better project. It's taken long, yes, I agree, but we should see the braiding. This this year for sure.
Now with the permits on our, we've already did it, there's so many again with county, correct?
Yes, because all of our plan check approval is through the county of Los Angeles, yes.
But I just want to make it clear that they have not pulled out of the city. Uh pulled out for, yes, so I want. I've, right.
Teresa can back me up, they submitted plans, they've spent. About five hundred thousand dollars, there's no way they're going to move out, Google is a little ahead of. If you go to Google, you'll see that there's a date, a chicken, a.
Yes, sir. I just, I just wanted to make that clear because I knew that and then when I was approached by three times saying that within this past week, I was like, no.
So maybe you got that information from, have them call me because, no, unless something happened. Yes, recently that.
Thank you.
But there's, no, there's five hundred thousand plus.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, and with respect to. SMP, Teresa, you're more qualified to talk about that since you've been interacting with them. For original October date.
And apparently, um people have us indicating to the city that their demo date is October the seventeen.
Sixty.
Sixty?
Yeah. Well, maybe you're right, I could be wrong.
And and that's.
Yeah, Mike.
They notified us of um their, what they call their groundbreaking, which is demo date. I'm, and they have applied for um their demo permit. Uh but still they took uh by the city with their fourteen oh-three with AKU and so forth, but they're moving along and going forward as well, thank you.
So they've given us a demo date of October the seventeen, then that's physically when. They're supposed to be demolishing the building, okay, yes.
Thank you.
Any other que- um announcements? Okay, so I have an announcement, I want to welcome Commissioner Ayala to our commission and um. I remember my first date, like I said before, so it's good. And welcome back to Katia, congratulations too. Now, is there any announcements for staff? Mr. Kwan.
Good evening, commissioners. Um so I I first want to start by welcoming also David Ayala, commissioner, new commissioner, and also welcoming back Katia. Uh to the commission, um but I I wanted to update you on the targeted zoning code efforts. Um for um Mr. Ayala um's benefit. Earlier this year, the city adopted its two thousand forty general plan. It's a first general plan update since nineteen ninety-three and as a result of that. Um we're now updating our zoning code to have internal consistency between the two documents. Um so on Au- August twenty-fifth, we uh had an open public hearing session. Uh uh with the property owners that are affected by the the potential zone changes. Approximately twenty-five to thirty uh property owners um came to the meeting, it was um. A very good productive meeting, we we listened to the feedback and the comments um that was given throughout the 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 meeting. Um this coming Thursday, we have a meeting set with the industrial business owners. Who, as you know, were very vocal during the general plan process. So uh we're looking forward to that meeting and hearing what they have to say with regards to the proposed zoning code update. Um and moving forward, uh staff is looking to. Uh once we have a final draft in place, we would like to have a study session with the planning commission, go over the entire draft. Explain the reasonings behind uh the code updates. Um more or less to get you more familiar with what is happening prior to bring in it before you uh in a subsequent meeting. So be on the lookout, we're we're looking at a potential October date for the study session, thank you.
Any other announcements from staff? No? Okay. So I would like to adjourn the meeting at six forty-four. Thank you.